I have to call and order a regular session. That can please stay after the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in heaven, with liberty and justice in its heart.
And for the record, we have Kevin Brown on script for votes. He is full white.
Oh, they are all white.
We would just like to acknowledge the terrorist attack that took place in Belton. If I could ask for all of us to just take a moment so I won't have this issue. Thank you. We have no report at a closed session. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda, but first, I have a motion to adopt the agenda moving item fourteen, approval of the employment contract of Dr. Jason Valoria as superintendent to proceed item nine.
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we're also going to eliminate special recognition A under sub nine and be moved to another time. So with that.
It's we actually posted a revised agenda.
Oh.
Okay, so you're okay.
Alright. So we move to number fourteen. I'm sorry. Did you vote? Yep. Okay, we have item number fourteen, which is the approval of the employment contract of Jason Valoria as superintendent of schools. I can make a motion on that. Do I have a second?
Second.
We do have a voice for them as I should.
We can.
We shouldn't have to put it after being.
In this session.
Oh, okay. You have public comment? Is there any public comment? Hearing none. Can we then do our voice for? You want to read it?
No.
No.
Yes.
No, 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 not this.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Lanzillo.
Yes.
Mrs. Fickers.
Yes.
Mrs. Normanin.
Yes.
Mrs. Garrett.
Yes.
Mrs. Brown.
Yes.
Okay, so congratulations, Dr. Valoria. I just like to make a brief comment. We're thrilled that Dr. Jason Valoria is going to be superintendent. He's a fine fellow. I know a lot of you haven't met him yet. But among of the great qualities that he had and stood out, many qualities, was the fact that he's a resident of Laguna Beach. He has lived here in Laguna Beach and his couple of daughters. And what goes top of the world? My correct.
The top of the world, his son goes.
Oh, his son, I'm sorry. His son goes to Thurston.
Correct.
And with that, I think Dr. Valoria would like to say a few words to introduce himself to the community.
Good evening, board of trustees and Laguna Beach Unified School district staff. I am deeply honored and humbled to have been selected as superintendent of Laguna Beach Unified. I don't think I've stopped smiling since I received the initial phone call. So I'm just so appreciative of this opportunity. I do want to express my appreciation to the board of education for the last several months. I know the dedication that you have put into this process. Very thoughtful, rigorous, speaking from someone who went through the process. And I know that the approach through the search process was one that was very well thought out and I'm very appreciative of that. And it really does show your dedication to the community and to our students. And I get to speak as our students because I have students who turn here as well, so that's great. I am very excited to be assuming the role of superintendent and I know how special the community this is. We have strong schools with very impressive staff. And with as a resident with two school age children, I get to see firsthand the great work that has been happening here in this district. And it's a testament to the work of the school board and the staff. Again, I'm honored. I look forward to July first. Can't come soon enough. I'm sure it will come very soon. And I look forward to meeting with staff, community members, and most importantly, the students in the next several months as we get going and as I transition to my new role. So again, much appreciation and I do truly look forward to the next opportunity to see you all again.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you taking the time to come tonight. If you wish to say, of course, you're absolutely welcome, but if you have other matters, feel free to leave. We will not be offended. Thank you for being here.
I'm sorry.
Does anyone have any comments?
No, I just wanted to say that I know all folks are eager here, but I would respect and ask that everyone respect that Dr. Valoria starts on July first. So that if he reaches out or if he makes conversation with you, that's one thing. But please, he has another job that he needs to finish out and his time will be have more demands on it. So I ask that we respect that. And then I just I was contacted by a reporter today and I just wanted to share that I essentially unlikely being or likely positively being in print that there what stood out to me. And I would say that Dr. Valoria has made comments regarding not reducing or holding back on opportunities and options for students, all students at all levels. And that was that was very important to me. And the other was management style and that this situational leadership, which is really maybe a more unique answer, but I thought was really fitting for our district. So I wanted to share that.
And I do know what Jen said and that those are things that stood out as well as the ability to discuss complicated matters at a high level and in the energy process to ensure that at a high level is very respectful. And then the site visit was wonderful and you have a lot of work to finish there because they they realized things they wanted to finish with you while they're sharing. But the most impressive thing, I think there besides all those people coming to speak about you to ensure that you're the best superintendent you can be, was that you mentored them in a way that they now have the skills to do the jobs that you stretched them to do. And it was incredibly impressive to hear it over and over and over by from thirty people who we had. And finish that out and have them refreshed and ready for your. Congratulations.
We felt like we'd made a good decision, but after we met with all of the people in your district, we were Carol and I were just so excited, even more so. So welcome.
I'll say one for your comment. The thing that I thought was one of the best things about you was your wonderful sense of humor. I know the community doesn't know you yet, but they will just get to know you as we have and you do have a wonderful sense of humor. And I think you'll bring a great, great leadership to this district. And we're just thrilled that you're here. So thank you so much. And again, I also would say Jen is right. I know you're a very busy man until July and then you're going to be extremely busy. So thank you so much. Kelly, you want to say anything? I forgot about you.
Of course, I'm not really talking to you. I I I sorry I couldn't be there. This is the last break my girls have together. Sorry, I'm being a mom. But I just I Jen actually asked me. Wanted to hold off on this so I could be there. And I'm just so excited to have you that I just want to get this quick to bed. So I'm thrilled to hear that you're coming. I think we've made a fabulous choice. I think the process really proved itself and that we have we have we have followed it and listened to the community and I think you are the answer. So thank you very, very much. I can't wait for you to start.
Alright.
Thank you.
Moving on to number ten, public comment. Item not on the agenda. Anybody like to raise a public comment?
There are, I can't.
There you go, okay.
I can't.
Okay, hearing none. I'm going to move down to number eleven, reports, student representatives.
So everyone, so it's been a we're kind of in between things with in terms of our dances, you know, proms coming up in late May. We already had formal. So unlike March, that is for basketball. March at LHS is kind of static. We had our blood drive last week. It was actually our largest amount of donors. We had fifty-four. That's the most we've had in recorded years. We have our powder puff game coming up on April eighth. And after that, we're going to actually hold a dance called the Black and Light Dance. It's like going to be a little neon dance. Three years ago, we did something called the Glow Down Dance. It was a success for two years and then the year we stopped it, it wasn't successful, but we're going to try to bring that kind of theme back. Hopefully it'll be successful. We've had our two most successful dances in terms of homecoming and formal. So we hope to keep that trend going on. Six week progress parade, six week progress reports came out on Monday. So now we're looking towards our twelve week for the next six weeks. We have Tinoji High School students coming from Japan this week. Every year we have about thirty students, freshmen through seniors, who take on Tinoji Buddy. So they get to be in your classroom. They get to stay with you till four, watch sports, and it's a really good experience. And then at the end of their stay on Friday, they perform a big dance for the school and it's really fun. All the kids get to connect with kids from Japan. Most of them actually don't aren't fluent in English, so it's a little bit of a language barrier, but it's a really good experience. And I'm actually get to be a part of it this year, so we're really excited about that. And then other than that, nothing, nothing too much to report on.
I appreciate that very much. Charlotte Booker, representative.
Victoria, is now when you're going to show the video?
If you can talk for a minute while I get better.
I'll talk, I'll talk. I lost our way to go give blood and the little checklist that you have to go through. I was in England on study abroad in nineteen eighty-two and that precluded me from being allowed to give blood due to the mad couch case. It's kind of crazy. We have had a busy week, not too laid back. In the month of March, I just went to CTA training to try and understand my role better with the teachers. And one of the things that kind of came out in there was all the new things that we've had going on at the school district probably over the last few years with I finally am a master at Google Docs, which has changed my world with my own students because they can no longer say, oh, I forgot it at home or I finished that paper, but I turned it in, you didn't get it because it's all right there. So that's been great, but we've also learned to parrot and thinking maps, sharpened knocks writing, Google calendars, pair deck, Chromebooks, math, Common Core pathways, new grading system, illuminate, UDL, the new elementary science, the Brain Pop. And so every time I go to training, I'm super excited and a lot of teachers feel that way like, oh, this is going to be so great. I know exactly how to use this. And then you go to the next training and then I look back and there's sometimes that feeling of, oh, I'm mediocre at everything instead of really mastering how to put this in place. But kind of this conference we're at, a lot of teachers where they're talking about how now it's time for us to master our craft and kind of really see how all of these different things fit into our own roles at the school and how we can make that successful. So I think we're kind of excited about now using all these tools that we have in our toolbox to kind of settle in and see what's going to work for my students, what's going to make the difference. I remember being excited about Brain Pop, but then I moved on to other things and one of my students and I teach some slide came and said, remember that Brain Pop I was working on and I came up with a quiz for us? And I thought, okay, I maybe haven't remembered everything that the kids are putting up to place. So another exciting thing for our students that I stumbled into accidentally is this, the power of we. And we were laughing because it sounds kind of weird, the we day. What does that mean? In kindergarten, it means different things probably than. But it's the idea of having students go from being me to we and having more of a global approach. And it kind of was going to be this small thing where I was taking a group of pals, but then our MUN, I'm sorry, our GSS class, which is for all freshmen at the high school, had at the same time, by happenstance, also got involved in the meet a we and had to do presentations in their class about how they could, rather than just globalization, look at how they could impact the world in some way. So they ended up trying it into a competition. So some of those kids that did well at that are going to attend the we day with me. I went to ASB and presented. We have some ASB kids coming. And then the next step's really going to be for our high school kids to go down to the elementaries and middle schools and talk to these kids. We live in paradise. We have so many opportunities to really get them to look outside of what people call the bubble. And I think we all are protected with the fact that that's not really true. And most of us are trying to give our kids experiences outside of that, but to look outside themselves. So on April seventh, I'm taking students with fifteen thousand high school kids, which I had no idea that's what it was when I agreed to this to the forum in LA, but they're kids from all the high schools in Southern California that get to send groups of kids that go and celebrate this idea of looking outside themselves. So this is, I think, just two minutes.
One heart with courage is a majority.
There is no moon like this moon anywhere on the planet.
The stage you're in front of you is living proof that we can redefine what is possible.
I know there's someone out here in this audience who's been old and I know that they need someone to look up to.
I tried to change right and I realized I don't know how to be anything but myself.
I know we all have some weaknesses, but it does not mean that we don't deserve to be special.
I'm holding my left hand and my lower leg out for a day and this hasn't slowed me down at all.
We are is all of you, the few dedicated coming together to change this world.
Anyway, it's exciting, but a little overwhelming to try and get people involved in this, but we'll be going that Thursday after Spring Bay, right? And then we will have students come report back as to how that went. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Are any of the students are going?
We are, we are only allowed to take twenty-five.
Listen. CSEA.
This will be short. So TOU, Spring CSEA Scholarship Fundraiser is adding to our existing scholarship fund coming up. We have, CSEA has twelve new CSEA members. Margaret Warner was nominated by our membership once again to attend the annual CSEA State Conference in San Jose this August. Ms. White and six staff will be attending the Pair Educator Conference, April twelfth through the fourteenth in Ontario, four of which will be presenting at the Pair Educator Conference. And a thank you also to Ms. Messenger for including two of the intervention Pair Educator RTIs in this conference as well. Yesterday, today, and tomorrow at Thurston is sixth grade oral history luncheon. It's gone off so far without a hitch, which is awesome. Jogathons at both elementary sites are this Friday. Would like to extend an invitation to all of you up here today to attend our annual year end classified and play recognition celebration, May eleventh, just put it on your calendar. It's at the high school. We'll have more information coming to you soon. And a big thank you from me personally to School Power. It's a great idea to have that online auction bidding for the set of auction items. I've never had an opportunity to sit, attend the big dinner dance and this was just a really great way to fill like this apartment. And I was able to buy my husband some really great pair of sunglasses. But so it was a great opportunity, I think, for a lot of people to participate that maybe might not be able to go otherwise. So thank you to School Power on that one. And that's it.
Thank you so much. Do we have anybody from PTA tonight? No, well, then School Power, I know it's.
Yes, there is.
Oh, PTA is here?
Yeah.
Oh, still happy with you. Good.
Sorry, I'm getting out back in the queue.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah. Thank you. I just wanted to look at my little tech notes here. I wanted to thank the district for including me in particular, but PTA and the community involved in the LCAP meeting. That was a great, I really, really enjoyed that. That was wonderful. It did a great job. So we missed the other meeting, but that one, it was just unbelievable. And it kind of dovetailed into at the PTA meeting, we had talked about what we can do or where we're seeing some shortcomings and dovetailed into last night with education across the board, with parent education, student education, and you know, staff education and how, you know, we didn't have any specific concrete answers, but how we might be able to do that more comprehensively and PTA can help with that more comprehensively to get everybody on the same page with whatever that topic might be. And so that was kind of echoed in both, you know, our PTA council meeting that we had as well as the LCAP. So you know, I think that when it's one topic and everybody's on the same page, whether it be speakers, I know my husband went last night, my daughter went last night to the, you know, marijuana meeting and, you know, those are, that was great just to have, you know, kind of that be the topic across the board. But to maybe integrate that even whatever that topic might be in, you know, younger elementary ages to middle school, to high school, trying to tackle those topics maybe. I don't, you know, I'm just kind of speaking from the hip right now, but just something to ponder that we had talked about at PTA. So that, but appreciate being included in that LCAP process, which I think kind of dovetails into what we were talking about in PTA. So we have, I think Elizabeth mentioned that Top of the World has their Jogathon this Friday. Is Almorel, I think Almorel is Thursday. Was that first Friday?
Thursday.
Thur- Thursday, yeah, Thursday. I just, yeah, I thought they were the same day too, but then somebody corrected me. And then Thurston just had Epic Challenge and did amazingly well. They netted forty-one thousand dollars. So that kudos to the whole, everybody that got involved in that, PE staff and PTA. And Thurston also has a lot going on, has the sixth grade oral history reports going on. And then we also, what else is going to be there? And then at the high school, I know that coming up is going to be a spring fling. I don't think there's been a date set up for that yet that I'm aware of, but that's also coming up. And I think that pretty much covers the angels night coming up in May. But I'll talk more on the details on that next month. That's it. Thank you.
Yeah, I did have one comment because one of the questions we asked during the interview process was, what innovative plans would you have, people like Jason and others? And he gave a great answer because he had all these innovative ideas and plans. And he says, but you know, would require funding from some buddies. I said, well, I got some great people to introduce you to in the PTA and School Power. And now they would love to work on innovative programs.
Yeah, definitely, definitely.
I can imagine that. It's, I think there's some exciting things that we can work on in the future.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Robin, School Power.
Well, I don't really have very much going on right now.
You're all there.
No, so Saturday night was our dinner dance, our biggest fundraising event of the year. We had a five hundred and seventy-one thousand dollar initiative that we put forward, two hundred and forty-six thousand from the school district, fifty thousand from our endowment board. And then we had a crazy, amazing, generous match from the Wilson family and the Martini family. So we had a double match that we offered. And so as a result, the room raised two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars towards this initiative to fund renovated, reimagined library at Thurston similar to what you have at the high school. And then eleven rooms. And because we went over, we're in discussions now to see if we can expand that to twelve rooms. So, so we hope that that will be possible. So we couldn't be happier. Mike was up here. Mike was a really big part of that and he basically killed it with this whole, with his leadership on this. Jun Shen and Andy Crisp were incredible. The video was like no other video probably in the history of fun and neat videos. And our donors in the end, you know, just brought it all home. So it was a really, it was my favorite, one of my most favorite experiences in the last ten years of School Power activity. It was just, you know, hugs afterwards and great feeling in the room. Really that feeling of the community feeling the love for the kids and wanting to make a difference.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and thank you, Robin. Robin worked tirelessly on this job and it was amazing. And I think my favorite part of the night was when they gave a standing ovation for Jun and Andy. And that was pretty awesome to see that and they were very proud. I think that's it. It's a great testament to our teachers, you know, how great they are. That was, that was pretty fun. So thank you.
So good times.
Thank you. It was a wonderful life. We're going down to board members. So it starts off.
Oh, starting dates, okay. So because we are trying to add some of these new courses, it was really good that at Jenny's PTA meeting that, I should say Thurston's PTA meeting and Jenny's. But the teachers came in and presented the new electors and they gave descriptions of them, which was really, of course, and the most informative because they were ones that are going to teaching them and explaining how they're going to change some of the elective offerings. And that was, they spent a good part of the meeting doing that. Almorel's PTA, they are, they had the new juvenile officer Cornelius and Bob Bellinger both came to talk about the event last night, the parent ed night, not encouraging those parents to probably not bring the elementary age kids, but for the parents to come because it's not too, your kids are not too young for you to start informing yourself of what's out there. And then they're also making a significant donation to the STEM room that they're going to create at Almorel. Fifteen thousand if I remember right, PTA voted to help finance that. A lot of you attended the Boys and Girls Help Partners breakfast. And I, what I noted was that they referenced the Healthy Kids Survey or Pam Estes, the director, and the fact that we really, really need to work on the connectedness and that for the teenagers. And that they are having that, they were calling upon all the community sponsors to really do whatever they can do to help with that initiative, that the, that our young people feel more connected to school. However, we're going to compensate that it is a concern. I did go for not the whole thing last night, but I went and wanted to go up to be supportive of the event. And there were a lot of students there. There were not as many parents as there were students, but they, I saw part of the parent presentation and they brought students in together and they had a very strong presentation by a judge, he's a grand court judge and has been done that for sixteen years. So I think it was, you know, they seemed to be very paying rapt attention to this presentation. They, I think those are invaluable. I know there's been discussion over the years that we don't get a huge turnout, but I think whatever turnout you get is of value to those parents and then they can share that information with their friends. And hopefully a lot of, for some of the speakers that spoke at the, for the parent part, we're really encouraging parents to have a lot of communication with their kids and to, in this time, the way the world is now, to find that time. But it's much harder to find that time when you can actually sit down and have conversations with your kids, which made me think back to, you know, not, probably not for a lot of you, but when I was growing up, there were not things planned on Sundays. I mean, it was really, and the world has changed. And I know it started to change with my oldest. When all of a sudden there's a birthday invitation for on a Sunday when it would have been a family event that was planned. That has just grown and escalated, which just really complicates the fact of, it'd be nice if you could have family dinner every night of the week, but if you can't do that, at least find some night you can do it because it's, it makes a difference. It's been proven that it makes a difference in kids and how they feel about themselves. Then I did go to part of the trophy meet last Saturday. I'm glad that our staff decided to bring that meet back and it's been growing every year. So we had a few students who did very well that day and Coco Putnam won the four hundred, which is really impressive when you consider there were, there are schools that come from Nevada to participate in this meet. And then got to see Irene White. I have to say, I was so impressed. Her son was running, a freshman running varsity and he won the race. He's a very strong runner, ran a four twenty-three, which is a remarkable time. So it was really, really exciting to see that. I just appreciate the effort that goes into that. That's, it takes a lot to put on something like that, a lot of extra time. As we see from our staff members and I think our students, you know, I look at that little video that we saw and I think a lot of our students are at that level. They are, they're not just within themselves. They do see the bigger picture. And I think when our, when our staff goes that extra to provide for them, they realize it, they see it and it's such an excellent example.
Do you?
Okay. At the curriculum meeting, I was really excited to hear about what's going on at Top of the World with the new person that's teaching coding to the teachers. And it's all laid out, so you learn, so first grade will learn one thing, second grade another, third another, fourth another, fifth another. And then if it goes well, hopefully it will can go to Almorel also. At the marijuana event last night, I wasn't there, but I, I did hear in the numbers were eighty kids and forty-five parents. And that Mr. Bellinger, who has high standards, really wanted more parents there. And last year there were more. And he really wants to target more elementary parents. And he really wants to target more elementary parents, and I guess sixth graders were there, but not anything younger, they didn't feel it'd be appropriate for. And I was thinking about afterwards, you know, teaching third grade, I have students then that I knew had issues, and I keep catching up on them, and got really bad news today about two of them. And so we know from a young time, we can figure out some kids that are going to have issues, and I hope we can just keep helping them and also encourage parents, like when your, your child is ten, you think nothing will ever go wrong, and the more information you have, hopefully it never does, but the more information you have, the more you can prevent that from happening. And then we also heard from a group that is going to be at the high school promoting mental health, mental health awareness in the month of May, and just having a conversation about it. There, there's going to be all kinds of music and YouTube videos and a time for parents to come together and their families, food, bring a blanket, and people are going to go around the track and kind of all high-five each other. It's called the High Five Event. So I liked the emphasis on being, not having mental health as a taboo subject, being able to talk about it. And I think that's it.
Thank you.
And I had a dear friend who submitted the High Five as well, as a, really, because it is about taking the stigmatism off of mental health, it just helps like all over the place. Yeah, I thought that was a great event as well. And then also in the curriculum committee was the books for the compacted math, and it's fascinating to hear that, you know, teachers are ready and they're excited and they're prepared, and the difference in that from when they're nervous and they're not and when they are. And, and so that was, it was great to see and hear them talk about, hear them talk about how they can still pull up and do the investigation piece and their comfort level with it and how, I don't know how they do it, but how they can work with the different students based on different needs and, you know, help the kids that need extra help, keep the class moving, give extra to the kids who need the challenges to go forward, and then on a magic wand. And so I always come away from those so impressed of, you know, I just have to get three kids in direction, you know, on the car, and it's more complicated. But, but they have, they have it, they have that magic touch. And then oral history, I have to say, for the years that I have gone, having the slide presentation for maybe someone like me who needs extra stimuli, sitting for so long, really made a difference for me, but for the kids, for them to put together those slides and the teachers didn't get stuck on, isn't a picture, a baby picture of the person you're interviewing, which you might not have met until just then, it might not have been a family member, just find a kid picture of a baby and put it on there and move on, right? And for the kids that were okay with that, you could just go on, it was great. For the ones who had to go get the, you could see they needed to have the actual baby photo. But I loved what they wrote, and they found quotes that were important to the person, and, and the slides had such an impact on helping the student, I think, not sound so repetitive, because they normally come up and they read the same repetitive thing. I think the slide, you know, the extra thing that they get to know a little more, they felt a little more connected to the person they interviewed. And then unlike the other years that I've attended, and it's my favorite event, and as a school member, I won't seem creepy going in the years to come, I was like, how do I get going through this? Is they, they all talked about all the change that happened in what they perceived in a very short time, where, I think the ones before it seemed like more of a distance, but it was just like, they didn't have any devices at all, one device, and the phone was hooked to the wall, I think that we saw in black and white, I'm not sure whether they'd even seen color, because the photos they showed them were all black and white. I think they, it was fascinating, because the theme ran through, at least yesterday, so I don't know what it was, but that theme ran through those classes, and they really, they felt connected to you, there was another time, and really connected with the person or someone that wasn't a relative, and they just told the person they interviewed, I love you, right? From that interview, they just felt so connected, so it was by far the best I attended, and it was so touching, and I actually had to, you know, I had to wipe my eyes a couple times, because the kids were so connected and so moving.
Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to mention that I went Sunday to see the play, and it was wonderful. And it was a little bit sad, because I was thinking to myself, I know so many of the actors in the play, because now my daughter, who's soon graduating, you're in the year or so, and I thought, you know, in a year or two, I really won't know anybody, because going back, if I went to Thurston today, I wouldn't know anybody, and certainly not the elementary schools. So there's this right of patches and passes as you go through Laguna Beach where you know all these kids, and looking at the kids in the play, many of them have been at my house, a couple of them I've been on vacation with, you know, you have this connection in Laguna that's wonderful, and it makes the play even more enjoyable, but so. And I, I do love the fact that kids in Laguna get exposed to theater for the time during elementary, and then probably even acting, a lot of them in middle school at Thurston, and then they, they develop these great skills and so on. So it was a lot of fun. I also attended the dinner dance, as Robin said, it was a great event, I enjoyed it very much, but a little too much money. My bill was crazy, but it was an awful lot of fun and a very enjoyable night, and they did some great stuff, raised some money. That's pretty much it for me. Our superintendent, Dr. Smith, I think just.
Just two brief comments. I too attended the dinner dance, and kudos to Robin, it was amazing. I think, I've been to six now, and I think that was the best ever, and it's a pretty high bar, not just the amount of funding, the money that was raised for our schools and our fabulous four C L and C L E projects, but the, the collaboration that we experienced with School Power. Mike is instrumental, Darlene is instrumental, Darlene and Lisa. It does take a village, and we spend a lot of time in those meetings, we have a board member in those meetings. So thank you. Our district benefits, our kids benefit, and I know a lot of time and energy on your part, so thank you, phenomenal. And I went to the oral history presentation today for a little while, and Dean and Lisa came with me, it was very impressive. I'm always amazed that the sixth graders are able to stand up in front of about three hundred people and speak in a very articulate way, and I thought the slides were a nice addition as well. So kudos to the teacher, Sarah Schaefer is the one who is the lead on that, and again, it was a really wonderful day and one more to go this week.
And I, can I piggyback first again on my turn? The kids actually were talking about when they were nervous, they realized, this Schaefer must get really nervous, and it was so sweet, there was something, because they're all standing waiting for someone to come through, so empathetic to her and appreciative of the time she was putting in, and it is impressive. That's it for me.
Dean?
Nothing additional.
Nothing for you?
Okay.
Ready?
I too was at the lovely dinner dance, and Robin did a wonderful job. I, of course, was totally proud of Mike and Andy and Jun, that video was incredible, even with the reference to something of mine, I'm glad. I wish I had only bought sunglasses. I made purchases I didn't expect to make, and Cole Hellmoon and I are now very good friends, I think, and I have to, I still have to pick up my items and pay, and I know you're going to run me down, I thought maybe they'd forget, but I did not. So that, thank you, that was a really lovely event, really well done. In terms of curriculum and instruction, we're continuing on in our Universal Design for Learning with Kevin Schaefer, who we're asking you to approve his contract tonight. He started yesterday, he was doing a wonderful job of taking, going, putting that next piece in our lesson plan development together for teachers. He did the math teachers in the morning, was very specific to the math and to talking about how the U D L is specifically mentioned as the research-based strategy in the framework. So that was a really nice connection. He's working with the teachers to show them how to make a four-step lesson plan that's very simple to do and doesn't feel like another thing. So that was really successful. In the afternoon, he worked with the administration, our intervention teachers, our T O S A, some of our special ed folks, and it was really successful as well. And he made the connections between U D L and M T S S. It's not another thing, it's things that fit together, so that was really effective. Throwing around the acronyms here, there you go. The writing work at Thurston with Charlotte Knox is going swimmingly. Jenny has absolutely embraced it, I don't know where she is back there, but, and, and she and her teachers are really excited about the work that they're doing, talking about writing across the curriculum and really implementing strategies that everyone can use. So if they're really excited, it was, it's, I'm like, wow, this is going too well, you know, everybody's engaged and it goes, which is really exciting. I expect to see some really great benefits for students from that. I think the writing will really help them in, in every way, but certainly on the smart balance assessment as well. Summer school, we were, have filed, have flown the position and have some teachers interested already, so that's going to be, we will be soon flying the position, have teachers interested. We've been continuing our planning, and one of the things that came out, where Lisa Brackus said, I'd really like to have an eight, nine, eighth to ninth grade bridge class of some kind, so I said, see if you can find a teacher, of course Carrie Dent signed up and is looking at doing some really interesting things to help transition some struggling learners to be ready for the high school experience, which is really exciting. So we're going to do that as well. We are, we have filed or flown our E S L position for adult ed and are looking to start that probably sometime in late off April and try our first run through April through June. We have ten parents that Johnny has reconnected with that were on our list that said, yes, we still want, so we're looking at continuing to do that. So that's our evening program as well. Mike Dustin and I are hard at work on Mike's vision for another professional learning opportunity. We're trying to figure out a way to make professional learning accessible to teachers without having to pull teachers all the time, and so this is a transition step that we're looking at, brainchild of Mike's called Rocket Future. Of course, it always has that written?
Rocket Ready.
Rocket Ready, so, Rocket, I only looked at that slide eight hundred times. And it's going to be a blended learning, mostly an online experience for teachers, you'll be hearing more about it, but it's another way to look at our professional learning and, and being more efficient for teachers. So we'll be sharing that with you as we continue to talk about it and work through all of the H R issues that we might have to. And finally, the oral history project, I went yesterday, Sarah Schaefer was, really wanted me to come up and look at how she has integrated the Common Core standards into the oral history project. The kids are really focused on listening and speaking standards, which are not very easily assessed in the smart balance assessment or the CASP assessment, and, but we are so very much responsible for. And so she really has worked hard to integrate those standards into that project, so it really is very much a twenty-first century project, and as you all said, those kids are so articulate, it's fabulous to watch them, so that was great. And welcome to Jason, nice to meet you.
Lisa?
Okay, so I also attended the dinner dance, thank you to School Power and Robin, although Andy told me he's only doing a slideshow next year. So.
The old kind with the carousel. Probably not, yeah.
With separate vacation.
Last week, we had a reclassification meeting. It was a jam-packed agenda, and we'll be bringing forward some of the recommendations from that committee related to our technology positions as well as our library media, so we'll have some things for you at the next board meeting next month. I also, last week, attended the Crystal Apple Awards, which was at the Church of the Latter Day Saints in Elisa Viejo. It was a lovely event. We had two teachers who were honored from Laguna Beach High School, and Chris Herzfeld was also there, Don Honeycutt and Dave Brobeck, who were nominated by students, and I think that's one of the greatest awards to get, is one that you get from your students. So that was a great event to attend. And finally, welcome to Dr. Gloria.
Okay.
Can I just, can I say thank you to School Power also, I got to attend my first dinner dance. Thank you, School Power, thank you, Darlene, for letting me do your date.
I was just gonna say.
Had a great time, and all I can say is, wow. Thank you.
And Dr. Gloria, we'll get to know you soon, but this lady here is a very important one of our staff, and one for her, I might have to be here sometime. Yes, we don't have a bill. All right, let's move on to number twelve, consent calendars, anything anyone would like to pull up?
I have a few comments, and I would like to have Dean reiterate, you put the identification and pull it for that, so I'll pull on.
Pulling I?
Mm-hmm.
All right, anyone, anyone wants to pull up, they can send me a calendar. Now I did have a motion to approve items A through L, except for I.
So, second.
And then do we have discussion on I?
Well, I had a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Question, a comment, and then we'll public it. I just wanted to ask you, Victoria, do we need to identify in March tenth minutes that the meeting was at Almorel and not in the boardroom? I don't know.
Yes, I'll change that. Thank you.
And then I just wanted to recognize, it was already referenced that our, some of our parent educators are presenting at that conference, but also that Jeff Dixon is presenting at the conference, and I noted both of those, and I'm really pleased when our staff members are asked to be part of the conference and present what they're doing. It's really nice, thank you. Those were my one comments.
Okay. So, remember you can vote I as well then?
No, I still want to pull that.
You want to vote I, okay. So you want to talk about that?
No, I want to vote on this.
Okay, we'll vote on it. All right, so we have a motion to approve items twelve, A through L, with the exception of I. All in favor?
I.
Okay, and now as to I?
I can approve of I.
Do you have second?
Second.
Discussion?
I just wanted Dean to, he answered my question today about they, how this compared to previous contract and how much we use it.
Sure.
And I asked you some more questions. Thank you for answering.
Nicole Miller's investigative services firm, so we use them for residency verification as well as for H R investigations to find out the facts around what's going on, to kind of, you know, these things like that. So, we look back over the records, it's not a traditional contract where we can kind of set it out amount for a year and we kind of know where it's at, kind of, it, it's, the, the amount of activity flows depending on what comes to our attention. So we've had about four occasions with residency, they usually run about fifteen hundred dollars, maybe for verification sources, you know, other, other issues for more personnel issues are more, maybe about ten thousand on average. We've had, I think, three completed cases, we have another two impending, so even though we did approve a thirty-thousand-dollar contract, and previously, this is another fifty, it's, it's set up to go through December two thousand sixteen, so that will, actually it's a twelve-month period because we, we do have a couple ongoing investigations that do not fit with the thirty thousand that you previously approved, and so just extrapolating out the best that we can, we just know that there's probably going to be that amount of activity. This firm also does allow for like a retainer, where they kind of look their history and says, just pay this month, not every month. We kind of had that, and then we had a long gap of not having, and, and so we said, well, wait a minute, we don't want to pay something for nothing, so we went to an actual basis, and as soon as you do that, then you get activity. So they, they, they work both ways, we always can choose the option, they'll work with us either way, but in the end, there's going to be activity, so that's knowing when it is or the volume of what flows.
Thank you. Good.
Any other comments? Any public comment? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Dean, I'm sorry.
I wondered with the personnel issues, if people were polled afterwards about how they felt about the way it was handled, or if they were pleased with the result, I mean, how, how well is this working, in other words?
It depends on the outcome.
No, I know people are, you know, one side's going to win, one side's going to lose, basically, but how is it, has it resolved things to a better level? Do you talk to people about it?
Yes, in, in many cases, we end up doing the follow-up activity if there is any. So in cases of staff being involved, we definitely have continuing conversation about that, and generally it's been positive. They're very professional, we've never had any complaints or issues related to their practices, they're, that's why we use them, because they're professional investigators.
Okay, thanks.
And I think I missed public comment, is there any public comment on these items? Sorry about that. On item twelve, I then, we have a motion to approve in a second, all in favor?
I.
Okay, moving on to number thirteen, is our monthly financial update, Dr. Dean wants to.
This is a report, the secondary report serves as a January, it's a actual of January month end, we go back into the monthly financial report, this is a February month end, again, our profit taxes come in primarily in December and April. First page summarizes the revenues expenditures, we see we have around sixty percent above for about six tenths of the way through, as is this report, the ten months of primary education that we provide, so that, that, everything's in line with where the normal expectations are related to revenues and expenditures. This is a twenty-two-page report, and the same as in previous prior months, again, the cash flow is more on the third page, and that's more of a newer page, the report this year to give a little more clarity, and the other funds, any of the other funds are on the subsequent pages, with the more outside services, contracted type of services, that's applied in two pages to the report. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Dean, any comment? Board members?
I just really like it being clearly defined on the transfers. I really appreciate that. I really appreciate that and as a, that it's presented on every month. So that it's easy to identify and follow.
Other comments? Public comments in section thirteen? All right, uh, moving then to item fifteen, second reading of Google Board Policies. If I take these one at a time, does that make sense right? Then we'll start with, uh, policy A, twelve fifty. Move approval?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Public comment first? Discussion on board members?
We have discussed these a lot. Right.
Okay, let's, um, move on to B then.
Wait, you did a motion again, new motion for everyone, you want to do?
But I guess we can do it separately. We did do, didn't we, we approved one right there?
You did, I'm gonna say. So you want to vote on?
Okay, let's do, let's do one, it's kind of easier. Uh, all in favor of A?
Aye.
We're going down to B, section thirty-five fifteen, uh, two disruptions. Any public comment on this? I'll move approval, sorry. Second?
Second.
All right, public comment? Board comments?
I don't think it missed that, you know, if the correction was made or the.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to C, thirty-five fifteen point four, recovery of property loss or damage. Move approval?
Second.
Uh, public comment? Or discussion?
Mr. Billinger, pick your answer.
Yeah, very well. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to section forty-one hundred, move approval?
So.
Forty-one hundred.
D, right?
D, forty-one hundred.
Move approval? Second.
All right, a public comment on that?
When it's like to pay, the, the adjustment is higher than we did, that's really helpful.
That's what Sarah did.
Thank you.
Some comments from board?
Thank you. See, I, I never know. It's just magic. Sure.
All in favor? Moving on to section E, which is forty-two hundred, classified personnel. Uh, move approval on this?
Second.
Uh, a public comment on this one? Board comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to F, forty-three hundred, administrative and supervisory, uh, supervisory personnel. Move approval?
Move approval. Are you moving it to second?
No, you can move it.
Second.
Okay, uh, public comment on this one? Board comments?
I do feel like we need to say that, we've talked about these a lot, these are all.
The secret changes.
Yes.
And basically they reflect the loss of regulations.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to G, five-one-three one point one point five, excuse me, vandalism?
Move approval.
Second? Public comment? Board comments? All in favor? Moving on to H, fifty-one thirty-seven, positive school climate. Policy? Let's read it second. Public comment? Board questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving to I, six-one-six three point four, the exhibit, use of student technology.
Move approval on the ever, ever needing to adjust these courses.
Uh, any public comment on this? Board comment?
Thank you again for putting the changes ahead. Really kind of easy to go through.
It does, it really helps.
It made the, I had to pull up old ones and go through so it makes all of us some easier.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving to J, five thousand nine, student technology use.
Move approval. Second.
Public comment? Board comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye. Oh, we're deleting this.
Yeah.
Delete.
Yes, yeah.
Then we go to number sixteen, permission to advertise, an invitation to bidders in a general circulation newspaper for the purchase and the installation of classroom audio and video equipment. This is Mr. West, open it.
Yes, uh, yeah, so, or Brett Martin could, could talk about how this relates into the 4CLE. I think you've seen the video, but this is, uh, gives us ability to buy over the bid limit. Uh, so go out there, you want to talk a little about the product?
Sure, Mr. President, members of the board. I, basically this item, we've approved once before, but what happened with that is the technology's changed since then. So there's no, there's now, uh, I rewrote the specs to take advantage of the new technology to get a better price on our switching, our video switching. So that teachers can like change their TVs with their iPads in the way that we have it set up with 4CLE. So what we're trying to do is lower the cost of a 4CLE room. What this will allow us to do is to go back out to bid, uh, with the new specs to get, to request a, a bid for the, the lower price and the newer technology. That's actually easier to use in my opinion. So, um, that's what this is for.
We have a move approval on this?
Second.
And any comments in the public?
Section one.
Board comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number seventeen, approval to delete the April twelfth, two thousand sixteen board meeting. Dr. Smith, will handle this one, I believe.
Uh, we were looking at our topics that we need to bring forward for board meetings. We don't have anything that's, um, urgent or compelling. And our board policy actually states that we will have one board meeting in April. So we are proposing that we, um, cancel that or delete that actually from the calendar.
And there was, uh, I mean, so the Senate, uh, technically is our constitution case.
But we did, we, we did prove it as a meeting.
Yeah, it's a meeting, but we had thought we might need it because of superintendent search and it didn't turn out to be necessary.
And you got one.
We have got that done. So, any comment on this?
I just have a, well, we have a motion.
Yeah, wait, motion?
Seventh.
Okay, second? Second?
Oh, I didn't have a.
No, we said.
Second.
Well, I, I saw with, with each that we received from the community and, and some of the things that we actually heard, uh, during our, our search process and all things going on, that since we already had this calendar, that it could be an opportunity for a, a short study session. That I think there's really was a general need for, that I heard more from community, from parents, that they need more information on how various things work. I'm not, off the top of my head, because this just came, since I don't have topics. But I think since we do have a calendar, that we could use that date to provide that.
Well, perhaps you could do a governance session, we have spring break next week, so we don't really have staff to pull something together, so maybe.
Does it come after that though? That next week is a combination of March and April, so that it would not be the fall and through.
It'd be April twelfth.
It's April twelfth, so we're back for a week.
Right.
Before this.
Right. That's kind of a short timeline to pull together something meaningful for a study session.
Well, I think, for me, when I look at study session, what I hear people wanting is they want more of a chance to dialogue, which is always like the big thing that people are worried about having. But that's what I hear, that is a need for that, to come in and have an opportunity to talk with board members about topics. I don't know that it needs a lot of, and that's what I was thinking of, so that it wouldn't be a lot on staff.
Would you like even just to open?
Staff doesn't.
Just like, open, just open topics?
Well, I mean, we have to have something that was interesting enough to people that they would want to come. But.
And you have to agenda it and, and you can't talk about it, so it can't just be.
Well, I'm perfectly happy with that, I don't know if we're rushing it, can we delete this and then put that in since we can, make it say a priority, maybe a little later than the twelfth?
Well, I don't know, then you get to the end of the year, it just seems it's, it was calendared.
Mm-hmm.
That it, because I definitely heard requests for that, for more of that meeting.
So, so, I mean, people really like that type of meeting, just trying to, like, what?
Even if we had a topic like the, uh, parent ed, I mean, that's, whoever was mentioning that earlier, the need for having more of that. We've had people speak to us about that, maybe we just, it's just a listening session for us.
Maybe input comment, there's a lot of times when we have these major things that we have deadlines on for, we do backwards planning to try to make sure that we're meeting those needs. And I do, do, know that some school districts have, especially when they have a first, third, or second and fourth Tuesday, they'll, they'll, they'll schedule a study session for one and a board meeting for the other. Maybe not every month, but maybe three or four of the months it can be a study session. So with pre-planning, next time you do a calendar, uh, for the end of the year, maybe that might be an option. But, um, I mean, for us, I mean, we're, we've come to you like in, uh, already with some of the facility stuff and planning for the summertime. And so I, I don't, not too sure exactly what we'd have on the twelfth, uh, on, on our side, but. But in future years.
Cindy, I think, I mean, the thing that's a conversation, at least, you know, my phone was drawn off on text, was the excitement of, uh, the four CLEs and, and, you know, what, what is that going to be? What does that look like? What, you know, for people who weren't at dinner dance or some that were, they wanted to kind of know more about what that is. It could be something along the lines of technology. It's a force, you know, what that looks like, because it's something we just did to a smaller group, a smaller violation.
Is that necessary for a board meeting? Is that more like an informational session?
Well, that's what a study session would really be, so it's not, it's not a formal board meeting. It's not really.
Right, but you guys want to dis, I assume, discuss something?
I think it's listening to the public.
Normally a sounding board, I mean, I don't know that it needs to be.
I was just trying to think of something like they're talking, I mean, it's basically talking about the superintendent, right, and how did the process go in the search and who is it? And he has a job until July first, so it's, it's that, right? But the other thing that at least I've heard about, it, well, and, and, and education, kind of, touching on Tammy said, really kind of, that everyone's learning those same skills at the same time, whatever those are, but I don't really see that as a study session unless it's what parents want. I'm not sure if that's really what the study session's for, of what they want along those lines of education and support, kind of like the high five, right, different things that they say they would like. I don't know if the study session's for that.
We, we have talked about surveying parents for parent education. Irene and I and, um, uh, Bob, we're going to be pulling together a group of folks probably in May to look at a comprehensive parent ed, but we need to gather some data. It's just a lot going on, a lot of surveys out there right now. So that's something we want to do later. And we, we think the survey will suffice, we could perhaps pull a focus group or something to do that, but we want to get the, the, the academic pieces, the social emotional pieces, you know, the drug and alcohol information, all of that into a more comprehensive parent ed, uh, scheduled program. But it's going to take a lot of voices in the room to do that. So that, that was our plan.
Well, so let me ask, we weren't a part of the governance workshop, but do you guys have more work that needs to be done? That could be, you know, follow-up meeting on April twelfth?
I, I did, I mean, I think there's always more, we can talk about governance. Um, I don't think we, I mean, we do have this, which is very helpful, and it's been referred to before at some time, but.
Or I think, Jan had mentioned at one point, she'd rather wait till Jason's on board, new superintendent. She'd say Jason, she denies superintendent.
Right. No, and that's, and that, no, and that's why I kind of meant like there's not that piece, um.
Dean, you've been quite quiet, do you have any thoughts?
If it, I, I'm not hearing anything really compelling to, to come. I mean, I, you know, if there's something.
I'm kind of agreeing with you, I'm, I'm hearing from staff will rush in this thing. I, I would, I like this idea of having this kind of a meeting, but I don't know we need to do it on the twelfth.
Right, and I feel, I mean, that's one thing I can think of, that wouldn't be staff pulling together so much for the twelfth, it was just that, you know, School Power just had dinner dance, we were talking about that. Parents are kind of like, what is that if they don't know what it is? Right, this, because it became part of a conversation.
Well, I like the 4CLE needing idea, talking about technology, because a lot of people have concerns about that issue.
They do, they.
But I'd like to ask some time for staff to get ready for it, that's, and then we could do a nice, I'm sure Mike could come up with it. He's already got slide presentations that he's shown, as you say, a select group of people, like the School Power folks and everything. We could use that as an introduction. And then maybe just have a general discussion about technology and 4CLE. Darling could comment on the academic side, he could comment on the technical side.
Right, and how it is as a tool, because there are people who are concerned about both sides of that, like, I can get too much, they don't know.
I know, some people say too much, some people a little.
Right, and some say, well, it's a big broad conversation, but you're probably right, it's not enough for staff. I was just thinking.
It's probably getting a lot of time to prepare itself.
But I want to have that as a bigger conversation than just that little narrow focus, right, of what foils. I was just thinking we could, we could piggyback if we're trying to keep that date, but it really is a bigger conversation, that being prepared for would be better. So, no, so I think, I mean, I think.
I was just thinking more of making us more accessible. So folks who always come in and think they're very limited in their opportunity to communicate with the board. And what I was hearing was, and partly what Tammy was saying, was the, the parent ed, I mean, that, that whole social emotional, that whole piece and what parents are looking forward to. But it wouldn't, I was not thinking of something that was really, uh, incumbent staff.
Did we have public comment on this discussion?
I, I don't know if we have. Not in, in public.
Probably asked.
I, I can't remember back to that, I doubt it. Anybody public want to comment?
Oh, we have a, we have a hand.
Well, I think it's always nice to have an opportunity for parents to just come in and talk to you. Not sure that, you know, I like the parent ed piece, I think that's, that's a great piece for the future. I'm not sure that if we, you know, we need to come to talk to you, but if you found a topic that was, I don't know, people are interested in, I always think it's nice to be able to come and just have a voice, you know?
Cindy, can you come up though and say, so I can, I can hear you and, and tell it to you are and then.
You don't say it when you're.
Adults, we hear it. Uh, I just, I like the idea of, of a little forum, a place to have discussion for parents who don't want to come and maybe sit through a whole board meeting, but, but I agree, it is very soon. But maybe the idea for the future, just to be able to come in and have a couple of items to discuss. I always love parent education. So, um, yeah, anyway, that's fine.
Thank you.
Yeah, and one of the things that came out through this search was, the community does want more, um, meetings. But I'd like to maybe structure it a little bit, so, okay, because it would be a chance. Let's say we discuss technology as one thing, we can discuss anything.
Right.
And just then sit there and just let people talk, you know?
Those are my favorite meetings.
Yeah, no, they are, they're the best, and, uh, we know we don't want to do more of that, so. Do you have a comment?
Yes, I did, thank you.
Mr. Hills, just please identify yourself for some.
Yeah, my name's Howard Hills. Yeah, I, uh, find this discussion kind of ironic, it's welcome. And I applaud the board for its solicitation of public participation. I remember at the, uh, December ninth, um, uh, two thousand fourteen board meeting, there was a discussion about, the organization meeting, there was a discussion about public participation. And at that meeting, the superintendent said, one, the board meetings have to be conducted in a manner that prevents dialogue. I found that to be odd, because I don't think there's any legal basis for that. I understand the concept of public participation has to be structured and you have the ability to limit time for public participation, and I support that. But, um, I just find this very odd. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but, uh, I recently attended, I, for, for three years, I've been encouraging study sessions and, um, and, um, public hearings. Uh, and I see that you've made some revisions to your bylaws that allow for different kinds of venues and forums, and I encourage that and applaud that. But I just, uh, really have to go on record, uh, reminding the board that it recently had a three-hour meeting that was called a governance workshop. The, the firm that you'd hired to do the search for this superintendent, you gave an additional contract to them to run this governance workshop, it was a three-hour meeting. Um, there were three people from the public that showed up. And we repeatedly requested an opportunity to participate in the discussion. And the answer we got was that you had allowed public discussion, uh, you invited public discussion at the beginning of the meeting, but since no one was there, you were closing the public participation. I subsequently sent you an email that reminded you that under the state law of the Brown Act, the board is required to give the public an opportunity to participate either before it takes the matter under consideration or during its consideration of the matter. So for you all to be sitting around talking about the virtues of public participation, I just have to go on record to remind you that I sat there with my wife and Sherry Morgan for three hours. I believe that the contractor that you hired, and I don't think you should have given a contract to him while he was doing this, uh, the superintendent search. Uh, I think there needed to be a different relationship between the board and the search firm during the search for the superintendent, um, than the relationship that was, uh, uh, ensued when you gave him a contract to advise you on governance workshop. But, um, we sat here and we questioned over, I believe he was giving you incorrect information during that governance workshop. I believe he was giving you an interpretation of your bylaws that was wrong. And I raised my hand and asked if I could inform the board that I thought he was getting incorrect information. And you, Mr. President, I don't, this isn't any kind of personal thing between you and me. I respect you, I respect what you do here. But I was told that we can't talk, and three of us requested to talk, and three of us were told no. In a three-hour meeting, and you couldn't give three minutes to three people that were here that bothered to come to me. I drove all the way down from Santa Monica to go to the meeting, and I was refused three minutes to talk, so.
Your time is up, I wouldn't like to extend you the courtesy of third floor.
Thank you, I appreciate the courtesy. I think what you're talking about is great, and I, I encourage you to pursue what you're saying. I'm just saying that as somebody that just very recently was denied the opportunity for public participation, it's a, I just wanted to go on record that you need to not just talk the talk, you have to walk the walk. Particularly when there's not a big crowd here and it was just three of us, it really was an unpleasant experience.
All right, and we're not going to respond to that. As to the legal issue raised, we will have staff consult with an attorney, if you will, and respond to Mr. Hills as to his allegation that there was some violation of law, which I understand is not true. Excuse me, I never said that there was. I'm sorry, this is how to open for him. Yeah, I know, but. Will we have somebody respond to?
I did ask after that, we were in error.
Were we in error? We're going to err and error. Okay, anyway, at this time, we have a motion to delete the April 12, 2000 board meeting. So, all in favor?
Aye.
No, I'm going to vote against it based on that I. I have study sessions. We used to have.
So do I, I don't mind that, please.
Aye.
All right, now moving to adjournment, our motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, our next meeting is Tuesday, April 12, 2016.
Now it's 26.
What is it?
You're getting 26.
26. 2016 at 6:00 PM, we're going to be at my school dinner.